Reverend Nedman, please come forward and give us the indication.
Yes, thank you Mayor Turner. Please pray with me. Holy God, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon our community and nation. We pray for those who are in the offices that govern this community. We pray for Mayor Turner and ask that you give him the wisdom to lead. We pray for Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Bryant, Ms. Graff, Mr. Gardner, and Mr. Gonzalez. We ask Father that you draw close to each one of them, work in their lives and impress upon them the enormity of the calling you have placed upon their lives. Father, help them to lift their eyes up to see beyond the limitations which have been placed around them. We are a vast community with many needs. Our desire is that they prove themselves to be faithful servants. Work in them to protect the values of our community and protect those who are innocent. Grant them wisdom to make decisions which will bless all of our citizens, not only a select few. Help them to become more than they are today, for in you they can become more than they could ever dream. We pray this in the name of Jesus, who became our Savior by His death, but who has always been Lord, for He is our God. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. At this time Councilman Gardner will lead us in the pledges.
Do you want me to pledge? A pledge to lead is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas's life, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
This time if Debbie Lee could come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Debbie Lee with Ector County Independent School District Volunteers and Partners. I'm here for an outstanding special recognition tonight, and I'm glad you're here to witness it. Today, we are here to present the Stand Up for Public Schools Recognition created by Texas Association of School Boards for recognizing partners for outstanding support of our students and schools. TASB promotes education excellence for Texas schoolchildren through advocacy, visionary leadership, and high-quality services to our school district. The task of educating young people is critically important, and we know that it requires all of our best interest of parents, educators, and the community. Ector County ISD deeply appreciates the unselfish willingness of eighteen Odessa Fire Rescue firefighters who went the extra mile during the 2016-17 academic year by mentoring sixteen fifth graders at Dowling Elementary School. Students' attendance improved, referrals decreased, and students' concept of self-worth dramatically improved due to these mentor relationships. I would like to call the names, and at this time, would Chief Alvarado and Chief Huger please come to the front? The mentors who served last year were Casey Babb, Caesar Benavides, Juanita Belider, Roger Lloyd, Gabriel Chavez, Eugene Dominguez, Kenneth Fletcher, Patricia Gill, Cameron Hewland, Almata, Yolanda Madrono, Elvis Nicholas, Brock Pittman, Johnny Crito, Tony Reyes, Cody Ritchie, and Joseph White. In addition to their duties to our community, they served sixty-seven hours last year mentoring our young people. So on behalf of TASB and Ector County ISD, I want to hold you as an example, and it's my honor and privilege to present to you this certificate, as well as this envelope, this folder, that has a letter from the state of Texas, and also to let you know that this recognition is posted on the state website for recognition.
Just on behalf of Odessa Fire Rescue, you know, we'd just like to say thank you very much. You know, it was a pleasure for, you know, our men and women to be able to step up to the plate and be able to build those relationships with the school district and specifically Dowling Elementary. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move to the consent agenda. I believe we have an item at the table. Do we have a motion at the table? Out of seat. Let's move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Need a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, please.
Formular.
Have second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously. In other council actions, we need to remove from the table to consider the City Council Minutes September of 2017. Do we have a motion to remove them from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it's now back on the table. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from September 12th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to public hearing. At this time, we'll open a public hearing to consider the annexation to the city of Odessa approximately 206.53 acres. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see, there are three different sections. If you look at the map, the most northern one is the Hurt family, soon to be purchased by Beadon Bow, is wanting to develop a residential area of 206.53 acres. That is right on the city limits, but in within the loop. Then you go down to Dr. Diaz. He has a retail area that he wants to develop, Cerron Fodria, I believe. And the very furthest one, which you may notice is over here, Pacific Drive, that is merely a roadway that is adjacent to the soon-to-be-developed CVS Pharmacy. And all of these have voluntarily requested to be annexed. This is the first hearing, and we will have a subsequent hearing later.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to address counsel on this agenda item? If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing and move to ordinances. We need to consider an ordinance to establish speed limits.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is addressing the speed limits on Billy Hext. The existing conditions is Billy Hext between Fifty-Sixth Street and East Ridge is fifty miles an hour. What we propose to do is with the recent addition of Compass Academy and the increased development in the area, is from Fifty-Sixth South, past the new Compass Academy, is make that thirty-five miles an hour, and then south from there down to East Ridge would be forty miles an hour.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I do. Now, I see the red line on there. Is it, are you just talking about the blue part being thirty-five?
Correct. The blue, which is thirty-five miles an hour, is from Fifty-Sixth down, and I just put the red line in as a border, a transition between the thirty-five mile an hour and where it will change to forty miles an hour.
Why wouldn't we just take it all the way to 191?
Well, I thought about that, but looking at the existing conditions, the existing conditions is right now, East Ridge is already forty miles an hour, and Billy Hext, with all the development south of East Ridge, is forty miles an hour. So I thought to match that, we could do the exist, or do forty miles an hour north of East Ridge up to where it lowers for the school. So that all of East Ridge, all of Billy Hext that's up by the school, all of Parks and Legato would match at the forty miles an hour.
That makes sense.
So you're talking about the thirty-five coming in and about the church?
Uh, no, no sir.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah. It would still be, it would, the, I had just the thirty-five adjacent to Compass Academy, because the county, and I'm sorry for going back and forth, but the county has signed Fifty-Sixth Street as thirty-five miles an hour also. So the front of the school would be thirty-five, and then I made, was attempting to make the side of the school thirty-five also.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Any more questions?
I, I, we're gonna have time in there, and I was gonna ask you, were there counters out there that were put to read how much, how fast people were going, or how did the exact speed limit you came up with? How did, how did you come up with that?
What I did was, what I did was basically match the existing, what we have in the adjacent streets next to where we're proposing the agenda.
Okay. Any other questions?
Have we did any traffic studies out there?
I have not.
I don't think you need to, there's so many cars going up and down at that school, you don't, it's crap.
It's pretty, it's pretty hectic out there.
It's pretty intense.
I have grandkids that go to school there, and my daughter says, that's a, that's a good start. I just wanted to make sure we hit it down far enough, and that'd be great, that would look perfect.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in second. Any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to resolutions. Remove from the table and consider amendment of ODC bylaws. Need a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is now back on the table. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have one question, if I could, just, you know, again, I think it's extremely important responsibility of attending meetings, et cetera, and, and it seems like from this, this amendment that we're looking at on the ODC bylaws, that everyone starts with a clean slate. And I, I think the, the absences already so in place should be counted, and I don't know if this can be done or not, I'm asking the attorney in regards to this, this bylaw the way it is written, if we can take into consideration that, that those absences that have been there will, will still take place to be a part of what the new ODC bylaws are being looked at.
I think that's how it was anticipating.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion to move.
Except for, I might, I might say if someone's subsequent appointment, then, yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I have an additional question.
Chair.
In there, you had said that it was a new term. I mean, if we accept these new bylaws, that it starts now.
Right.
Right?
Right.
But from what I just saw, you agree with that, we're gonna count the previous absences.
You can count the previous absences, but they would be only applicable to, to the, the new language.
Okay, let me ask a question.
Okay.
Is this for a six-month period? Is this for the entire year or what?
As I understood, it's for a year.
It's for a year.
It matches councils' requirements.
Now, I thought councils was a rolling six months. Is it or not? I guess.
You mean our, our city council?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
So... I just think we need to be very clear, so vice versa.
It was supposed to be, I'll slide you on that recollection, but it was supposed to match the city councils. And, and I believe that's what it does, in fact. So that would be a rolling six-month period as far as, we, we have, you know, there's, both a compliance committee and, okay, where do you start the rolling?
Yeah. I mean...
You go six months back.
But if this is a new, new bylaws, where, I mean, you, you have to have a starting place.
I was thinking that it would just start, I mean, it would keep the same starting place that it, as if it were just left in effect, but if you do not desire that, I mean, we can, we can change that.
Why would you, why would you erase the absences that's already there and start all over it? Just all your, all your changing is what it's graded by, how we interpretate the, how we're interpreting the absences, and instead of having it the way that it was, it'll, it'll start matching the six-month rolling, starting whenever we put this in effect, then...
But, but you gotta start, and you gotta figure out where that rolling, starting six months is, I think.
Soon as, she's gonna look at the past six months?
Yeah, we, as far as I am concerned, it would just go back six months from now, and the new rules would apply, and the numbers would apply to the new rules, but it would be the six months from today.
You know, again, it's the responsibility of, of being an attendant, whomever it might be who's appointed that committee. It's important that they do attend, and whomever it is, but I do think that with the change that we're looking at here, that we ought to count what's in effect right now. Should, should be there.
Meaning?
Be a number of absences that have occurred up to this point, be a part of that, part of that new, the new policy.
What are the absences you've had in the last six months? That's how many absences you have?
On the existing, on their, so if a new one comes on, it starts.
It'll start when we come down.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Do we need to change the wording on the, for the rolling system?
I don't think it changes the wording, I think the way it goes.
I, I have no problem either way, I just need to make, wanna make sure that we have a clarity, and that everybody understands whether you start now all over, or you're gonna count them. Either way, I have no preference whatsoever, but I wanna make sure that there's no confusion on anybody's part, so.
Well, my understanding, and just correct me if this is wrong, but it would start not all over, it would, you would go back six months from now, but you would apply what is being currently adopted here.
To the existing.
I can live with that.
I hope I'm saying that right.
I can live with that.
Okay.
And, and I'm like you, I, I don't care whichever way, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same, on the same page. Is that the way that ODC originally wanted this? Because it's their bylaws.
I don't, I don't remember a discussion of that exact point, but that was always my understanding of how it would be.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion in second. Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider adoption of the proposed master thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. This is the proposed master thoroughfare plan. City staff, Ector County staff have worked on this to identify roads that will be needed to be improved, to, that will be needed as the city further develops. And, and as been mentioned previously, this is a living document. It will need to be updated in the future. And I can't tell you the last time this has been updated, so it's, it's long overdue and needed. Ector County Commissioner Court have already adopted this at their September 25th meeting, and it's our recommendation to adopt this.
Okay. Any questions perhaps?
You said a living document, so at any point in time, you know, the citizens of Odessa have any concerns, or any of the city council members have concern, you can go back and revisit any of it.
Absolutely.
And the purpose of it passing today is, is we can move forward with it?
To, to move forward and, 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 and work with Tech dot, work with the MPO, and to, to identify roads and needed right of way.
Well, for the benefit of the people that are here, I think it would be very interesting if you could explain to them what the first goals are, where our first aims are gonna be. I know if I were sitting out there, I'd wanna know that.
Tom Kerr, who works for her, and I'll come back with that, with the question. We need to establish, this will establish, these are our plans right now. Plans can change as they go, but it does, we do need to establish what we're looking for, so that as the development occurs in that area, we can establish the right-of-way that is associated with that type of roadway. And in general, the grid pattern and things you see are based on, if you have a, say, the, the major arterials, which are those yellow lines that we have on here, in, in within a square mile area, you're needing those types of roads to handle the traffic that should be generated from that type of area. So, from, from that. I'm sorry, I, Ms. Graff, I, I missed Councilwoman Graff, I missed Councilwoman Graff. What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Well, I just think that the, the people sitting out here would look at this, and I think, if I'm in your shoes, I'd say, okay, what, what are you gonna do with this? So if you could just kinda tell us where we're seeing our first problems, where we need to start beginning our work, I think, if I were y'all, I would appreciate that.
Give you a little more description of what's the purpose of this.
Yeah, and let us know what's really going on.
Sure. The, the purpose of this plan is, is to help establish those right-of-ways and roadways that will help to, that will manage traffic well. So if you're putting in residentials and you don't have a larger road very close to you, you're gonna have a lot of clustered traffic, and you're not gonna be able to get off to where you need to go efficiently and effectively. And so this plan helps us establish a grid or a pattern to do that. One of the things that this plan is, is providing that, that, an update to the loop. Our current thoroughfare plan demonstrates that the loop is a major arterial, which will mean it always has lighted intersections on the loop. We're updating that now to be a freeway, because we, I think we've always intended, we've even seen plans developed by Tech Dot in 2010, that the plant, that the loop will be a freeway. If you go to Lubbock, if you go to Adeline, you go to San Angelo, Midland's working on theirs. A loop is typically a freeway, in which you can travel without having intersections and having cross-traffic to worry about. That's one of the types of things we're highlighting here. County Road 60, we, we've added County Road 60 as a freeway, and so in the future, County Road 60 ties from 100th over to 349. That way, you can have another freeway, similar to what you have on 191, tying the two communities together up to the 349 highway. And so also, say, the, the major arterials, you need those on, say, a one-mile basis. We have other types of roadways, collectors and things like that, that we're needing to define, so that as people develop, we can make sure those roads can be created that way. And again, as a plan, it doesn't necessarily have to line up exactly where it is, but within that area. So we're trying to, to make that plan work for the future, so that things can go effectively and happen.
Well, and one of the things that this really helps is, it shows Ector County and the city of Odessa together, looking at priorities on roads, so that when we go to the MPO, which serves both Odessa and Midland, we can compete for those very few Tech Dot dollars that we get in this area, because it shows we have a plan, and how we're following the plan. And so that's one of the major benefits of this.
Very much so. We talked to Tech Dot as well. We got with Tech Dot and said, hey, does this look like this? And we use terminology that meets, that matches Tech Dot, so that helps us as well.
Thank you very much, Tom, and Hal.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have second. Motion in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Hal could have addressed all that, but I'd like to talk.
Next, consider an industrial agreement with the owner of Lot 8, Block 1, Beazza Property Subdivision. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a property of approximately four acres that's located on South 385 in the Beazza Property Subdivision. It's owned by Rikers and Company, who wishes to develop it for truck washing and leave. This particular contract will allow them to access utilities. We have a water line that we have run from there, past the loop. They'll be allowed to tie onto that and use any other city utilities that are, that are adjacent there too. The reason that we're not doing annexation is it isn't immediately adjacent, and therefore we're putting it in our industrial district, where they will be paying, making payments in lieu of annexation. In other words, what would be our typical property tax, they will pay, there will be no sales tax that it's paid for.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Long?
Yes, in the event that we get annexed, what happens then with this agreement?
Well, under the agreement, we can annex unless it's voluntary until 2021. They might well agree to an annexation. We would have to extend that corridor on down, which as you're aware, we do have plans to do at some point in the future, because this is only four years away, we're thinking, and probably, we will do it at that time.
Okay. Any other questions?
None.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the vote is four to one. Under miscellaneous appointment of wards and appointment of officers, Mr. Romano, we don't have any.
No. I do that.
Oh, you do?
Yes. On the Planning and Nominating Commission, Catherine Kirk has moved out of the district, and I would like to put Jim Rector in her spot.
What was that again, Mike? I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
My, my current appointee has moved out of the district, is moving in a different area, and so I want to put Jim Rector in her spot.
Okay. And I move to nominate Jane Collins for the Odessa Development Corporation.
Okay, we'll just, we'll just add that on to Mr. Rector's. Okay, so we have a motion to approve all?
So moved.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the vote is four to one. Motion passes. Next, we move to Personnel Matters, Deliver, the Employment Evaluation Duties, Discipline, Complaint or Dismissal of Public Officers and Employees. This will be an executive session to discuss the yearly evaluations. It's under Texas Government Code 5514074. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Have second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in executive session at 6:29. Okay, we need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
At 8:50, and no actions taken. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now out of executive session. Last agenda item is Citizens' Comments on Non-Agenda Items. First, we have Rocky Selma. Is Rocky still here? Okay, I guess Rocky left. You wanna talk about a water issue? Next is Gloria Gonzalez. There's a group of three, and one is gonna speak. Ms. Gonzalez, you'll have three minutes, but please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Gloria Gonzalez, and I'm a legal assistant in the City Attorney's Office with the city of Odessa. I have been employed by the city of Odessa since February of 2000, and I have only ever worked in the City Attorney's Office. I am very proud to say that for over seventeen and a half years, I have worked with Larry Long. When I began my employment, I was hired as an attorney. When I began my employment, I was hired as an administrative legal secretary, directly under Larry, who was at the time first assistant city attorney. Two years later, in two thousand and two, I was promoted to executive legal secretary and worked directly under Joel Roberts, then city attorney. I worked directly under Joel for two years, then in two thousand and four, when Larry was appointed to the position of city attorney, and I have worked under him ever since. To my left is Farah Hernandez, who has worked in our office since 2013 as executive legal secretary. And to my right is Christina Bunercam, who has worked in our office since 2015 as administrative legal secretary. Having personally worked directly under Larry Long for my fifteen and a half years, Farah having worked directly under Larry Long for four and a half years, and Christina having worked for Larry for two years, our learning experiences have been vast and varied. We joined together to state that at no time whatsoever has our working experience with Larry been anything but professional and respectful. Our office has always been and will continue to be a very pleasant and safe workplace. Larry is a very kind and fair person to everyone and anyone. In our experience, we have only known him to care about the city, its citizens and its employees, not to harm it. We don't believe that Larry would ever do anything to harm the city. His first concern is always to protect the city and its interests. Larry is a true fighter in your corner when it comes to helping you and encouraging you to be the best and the most that you can be, as a worker or as an individual. That is why we don't believe the claim against him, and we respectfully ask you to look at all the work that he has done for the city, and all the years that he has served it, and to truly look at any possible reasons that there could be for anyone to want to harm him or his reputation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next is Patricia. I apologize, I can't read your last name.
Alvarado.
Is it Alvarado?
I believe she was here. She was here. She stepped out. She may be back. She went to the...
Uh, the next is Terry Mercer. Mr. Mercer, Terry. Okay, uh, Kim Underwood.
Mayor, council, appointees. My name is Kim Underwood, and I reside at forty-four twenty-one East Fifty-second Street in Odessa. I retired with the City of Odessa in 2011 as the budget manager for the city. This was a position I happily held for ten years. I am currently a managing librarian, corrector of county. Tonight, I'm making comment on the evaluation of City Attorney Larry Long. I worked with Larry, uh, for many, many years, actually, a little over thirty years, uh, on a professional level. It has been reported to your constituency through the media that a second sexual harassment claim has been made against him, and that the city's human resources department has concluded that there is support for this claim of harassment. This legal assistance claim, also reported in the media, has been known since July of this year. We are now approaching November with no resolve or further investigative approach to her claim, or not one that has been announced to your constituency. If this council wants to be seen as the true diverse rogue outsider group that you claim to be, fighting for minorities and those without a voice, you will diverge from the same good old boy mentality of previous city councils and hire an outside HR group to investigate this second sexual harassment claim on Mr. Long. I personally have no knowledge of the specifics of this sexual harassment claim, and I do not know which of Mr. Long's employees has made this claim. This is not my concern today or in the future. I witnessed that over the years, no remedy has been sought or prescribed for city employee grievance process inadequacies that plague any claims or grievances against city council appointees. The current grievance process fails all city employees who report to a council appointee, mainly because the human resources department reports to one of the council appointees, the city manager. This current organizational hierarchy will always pit one council appointee, namely the city manager, against any other council appointee under investigation by the HR department. It appears to your constituency that one reason Richard Horton, as city manager, was fired, was part and parcel due to a conflict between the city attorney and the city manager. An outside HR contractor would alleviate how this looks to your public. Before you complete the evaluation of City Attorney Larry Long, please consider at this time hiring such an HR contractor as I have described, and change the current grievance policy to protect all city council appointees and give their employees the voice they deserve. A voice that all other city employees are afforded each and every day in all the other departments. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Here's Patricia, Alvarado back. Okay, that concludes...
Mayor, I have three cards for the record. They did not wish to speak, but I wanted to read their comments. Uh, Michelle Green, Mr. Long's character is both honorable and trustworthy based on my years of working with him and as a personal friend. Susan Barron, Mr. Long is a man of the utmost character and integrity based on thirty years as friend and employer. The last one, Kristen Fields, Mr. Long has been an excellent role model for my twenty-one-year-old daughter and her boyfriend, as well as a strong ethical city leader for years.
Okay. Do you mind checking to see if Ms. Alvarado was out there?
No.
She's gone. Okay. Uh, need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.